Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Present.
Here.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
Here.
Here, thank you. So our first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is items for information. And the first item is the report from our school-based health center.
Well, and we always look forward to this report and what a vital and integral part of this school, our school-based health center is. I think I'm going to ask Mary Rodino to introduce our guests, but I think most of you know them, and make a couple of comments, and then away we go.
Good evening, everyone. We have with us two of our, I'll say, main partners in our ETHS Health Center, School-Based Health Center. We work with these two people most often and sometimes all the time. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Amy Crowe and Ida Joyceia, who we all know as Joyce, who was an RN with North Shore. And Joyce is really the person that I personally work with all the time. She's definitely the daily face, and so we interact often. And I'm the, I guess you could say, support administrator for the school-based health center. So I've learned a lot over the last 16 years, and we look forward to your report. I think it's been, I don't remember if we did this last year when we were remote. It's been a while. So we're looking forward to hearing how things are going with them. So thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us back. I'm Amy Crowe, I'm pediatrician who loves adolescents, and I'm the medical director of the ETHS Health Center. This is our mission. We wrote this during the pandemic. The ETHS Health Center welcomes and provides care for all ETHS students, empowering them to take agency of their own healthcare practices and optimize their lifelong physical and mental health. So you may, some of you may remember that we opened at ETHS now, we had our 25th anniversary last year, so this is our 26th year. And we're a partnership between North Shore University Health System, ETHS, and the City of Evanston Department of Public Health. We are open year-round, including school breaks in summer. We provide primary care, reproductive health, mental health services, and this is to all students at ETHS regardless of insurance status.
So I'm not going to go through every number on here, but really I just wanted to show where we were pre-pandemic and where we are now, kind of climbing back to seeing as many students as we were before you all went to remote learning. We also lost half of our providers through the pandemic, but we're slowly getting back to where we were as well. Just some demographics on the bottom. Like Amy said earlier, we serve all the students regardless of insurance status, and truly the bulk of our patients are getting care with us that they otherwise might not have or would have difficulty accessing outside of here. So we are proud of that fact and want to continue seeing as many students as we can. We know there's a great need for not only primary care but also mental health. So you can see the number of mental health visits that we've done up there as well.
What I think is interesting is that in fall 2021, we saw as many patients as we did in the entire 2020 to 21 school year. So we're very busy. A lot of those are mental health visits. Here's our staff. That's our 25th anniversary picture. So, yeah.
We have two pediatricians, three nurse practitioners. Kind of in the heart of the pandemic, we were down to two physicians and one nurse practitioner. We have myself, we have two social workers, our medical assistant and our secretary. A third of us have been here since the opening 25 years ago, or 26 now. So that's us.
I'd like to add a couple of things. First of all, during the pandemic, you stayed open the whole time. Even when this building was abandoned, you were by phone taking appointments, monitoring the entrance, getting people in, serving them. It was heroic. And with all the fears about COVID and the pandemic, and well before you could be vaccinated, you kept that clinic open and were serving students and families. And I was impressed then, and I'll be forever impressed. And the other thing I want to add is that, Dr. Crowe, you have actually been serving on our medical advisory board as well. And so you guys have really been doing double and triple duty, and I just want to be sure that I lifted that up.
Thank you.
Yeah, we couldn't have stayed open without the support of the school, though. Support of the school, providing the space, and also North Shore. And we really did kind of try and like strengthen that partnership and the collaboration between all three partners, the school, North Shore, and also the city of Evanston. And, you know, we did offer telehealth. We still continue to offer telehealth, but these students wanted to come in. They often turn that option down. So we were here, and it was good to see people throughout that time.
So we'll just talk about some of the key services we provide. One is reproductive health. And so since our inception, we've provided counseling and access to all forms of contraception and sexually transmitted infection screening. We partner with, we love our partnership with Erie Family Health if we need gynecologic care. And we also provide all the sexual health education for ninth graders, which you may not know.
And we've recently opened that up to include the Transition House and the Day School as well, which we had not done before. In terms of, I just want to add to, like, needs, new needs coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been obviously a lot of focus on mental health, and rightly so. It is a crisis that we're in right now, but not many folks are talking about the alarming rise in rates of STIs. And so that is something we're working hard to try and address as well.
And I guess in the column of good news, the rate of teen pregnancy nationwide and in our community is down. So we've always partnered with students who want to make healthier choices. And we originally had sort of a weight management program in the early days, and it's now a wellness and healthy lifestyles program. It's called Well Kids. And we're lucky to have Lynn Chehab, who's a pediatrician who's certified in metabolic medicine, so she's a real expert on this. And we have, in the last five years, geared our focus onto some evidence-based small changes in the areas of sugar, sleep, and stress. So when students are interested, we will meet with them and do like a full assessment and then work with them on motivational interviewing to see what small changes they're interested in and guide them through that process over as many years as they want to meet with us. Initially, you know, we want to see initial improvements such as better sleep and better mood and better academic performance. And then the side effect of all that could be weight loss.
What's really been helpful, too, is the increase in incorporation of SEL concepts and ideas in all the classes. I think when we talk, when we get the students and they're talking about how they manage their sleep and manage their stress, they just reinforce that these concepts are also talked about in their classes. So that's been really helpful to get that common messaging across what we do in the exam room and what's happening in the classrooms.
So this is nothing new to y'all. So we know that nationwide, the rates of suicide in adolescents are climbing, as well as the rates of diagnosis of mental illness. And like you, then, you know, we see the need for resources exceeding availability. What we have to offer right now, we have two part-time social workers. One has been with us, that role has been with us since the beginning. She also does a lot of counseling on insurance status as well and helping people get enrolled. And she does a lot of other things, but she does a lot of therapy. And then we have, North Shore University Health Systems provides us with another part-time social worker who does therapy at ETHS, you know, a limited amount per week of hours per week. And we're very lucky to have both of them, but they are full. So we're working hard to partner, we're looking at every, sort of every corner of, we're looking at ETHS resources, North Shore resources, the city, and then we're also seeking some grants. So we don't really have a monetary ask because we're doing great. We're sponsored by North Shore and ETHS, and we are thriving. But we, what we, what our ask is, is sort of around awareness and partnership. So one of the best things that came out of the pandemic are my relationships at ETHS and with the city and deeper into North Shore, and all of us feel that way. We want to be embedded in the school. We want to be integrated, and we want you to share the, you know, spread the word of the work we're doing and use us. And we want to partner with you on initiatives, and we want you to spread the word of our name. So thanks for listening. It's an honor to be here tonight.
Are there any questions?
We love questions.
One more thing. 25 years ago, it was hugely rare to have a school-based health center. I mean, like, it got national write-up and everything. Over the past 25 years, we've been contacted by a lot of schools, and we've had visitors and the like, and there are more, but it's still there. Maybe not as rare, but I think it's a real credit to this partnership and to this high school that we have something that is still truly uncommon in most schools across the country.
We're lucky.
Thank you. I really appreciate the work you're doing. It's clear that, I do remember the conversations years ago when our school-based health center was one of the few in the country. So I guess my question for you is, how do we do these things? What can we, as a board, do to, well, we'll remember you. But, you know, what can we do to partner and support you?
I think spread the word. Advocate for us when we need advocacy. Someday I may have an ask for you.
Sure.
And stay in touch. Come visit us.
Yeah.
Come see our work.
Always welcome. We're right there in H101. And I think, I'm hoping that since the pandemic, it's kind of laid bare a lot of gaps in wellness and education, that this is kind of an opportunity to see where we can fit in little bits of health education. I know as everybody has returned to the building, there are a lot of teachers and coaches and just staff in the building that have health on their minds and really approach teaching or coaching these students holistically. There's just opportunities where we can jump in or you can link students to our services. You know, I think with anything in health, it's hard to catch people when they, it's hard for people to receive this information if they're not really needing it. But I think folks are needing it right now, you know? A lot of students aren't well, so plug us.
Definitely.
If I could just add a couple of things, too. You guys didn't plug yourself to say that you also do our staff flu shots on site. So I don't know, Joyce, if you remember how many we did, but we've been doing those for-
We've been climbing every year.
Yeah.
So I think we were close to 300 this year.
We felt like it was a great collaboration. I think the city provides the vaccine, I mean, we purchase it from the city, and then you guys administer it. People can do it at their convenience. And we felt like it was a really good program to kind of promote wellness among the adults in the building and make it easy for them to get their vaccinations. So it's been a great program. And then I know we don't have a monetary ask at this point, but I did want to let the board know that there's been some talk recently. We do get what we consider a pretty large grant. It's about $121,000 a year. ETHS files for it to help subsidize some of the personnel costs that North Shore pays. But there's been some talk that that grant is going competitive now. We don't know exactly what that's going to mean. We feel like we have a good shot. We have a good need. We have a great program. We have a diverse student base. We have a diverse, you know, economic base. And so we feel like we should be in the running with anyone for those funds. The funds are already secured for next year because it's a two-year grant. So just kind of to put in the back of everyone's mind that there may be an ask down the road depending on how the funding goes. There's a little bit of a nest egg there from some generous donations over the years that ETHS does, you know, manage or, you know, ETHS keeps it on our books, if you will. So it wouldn't be an instant issue, but it, there could be a financial ask in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're open to new ideas, new initiatives. We rarely, we almost never say no if we can. So if you have good ideas, we want to hear them.
Yeah. And I was just looking at our app, and I was wondering if it's in here? And if not, that could be an interesting space to exist and then to promote. And, you know, maybe there's like a check-in, you know, reminding kids or staff to check their heartbeat or do, you know, kind of some of the things that are part of the latest watch phase. But am I wrong, is it in here or not?
No, I don't think we're in there.
Okay, so that could be kind of a fun partnership.
Yeah.
Accessibility is. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say, like, what a privilege it is for our students to have access to your resources. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything you guys are doing. I'm so impressed that our students have the ability to have comprehensive healthcare on-site here, and it's so valuable. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. You know, I didn't mention, like, the beautiful side effect of us being present is that kids stay in school. So I forgot to mention that, you know, the big picture, right, is that they just come for their appointment and they go back to class. So they don't need to be picked up. Parents don't need to take off work. We can actually, we spend a lot of time going to get them out of their class when they miss their appointment. So we'll continue to do that.
Wonderful. Thank you again for coming and giving us this great report. It's so uplifting.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work you've been doing. All right, and we have another report, great report, a report on student services and student well-being.
And Dr. Campbell's going to introduce, oh, you're even going up. Dr. Campbell's going to introduce and-
And.
Present. And of course, Dr. Kinsey, I didn't mean to, but I wasn't trying. It was a change of plans.
Good evening, board. Dr. Kinsey and I are here to share the annual well-being report, and I'm just, I'm going to let Dr. Kinsey start.
All right. So it was hard not to speak up, I have to admit, listening to the school-based health center, because they are so awesome and the partnering takes hold in so many different ways. So it's fun to go after them and get to hear all that they offer because we witness that and do a lot of referrals with them. So. So we're here officially to reflect on the school year 2020, 2021, in terms of school goal two and student well-being. And that really includes the responsiveness and thinking about responsiveness to our students, responsiveness to our staff. And it's kind of very fitting that we're reflecting on this two years after the pandemic, almost to the day.
Yep.
And thinking about how we made it through a pandemic for two years together. I know we're not reporting on the full two years, but for two years. And thinking about how somehow all of us as staff really reinvented ourselves continuously. I was joking with someone that maybe I would come up and raise my leg up and show the ball of my foot that still hurts, but I won't pivot and I won't do the ball of the foot. But that's really what we've been feeling like. So many people, right, have constantly pivoted. Now, Dr. Campbell, all of the staff, everyone from our custodians, our support staff, our teachers, our students, our families, so we really appreciate it. And we know that it's been hard and that sometimes we've gotten it right, and sometimes we've worked to identify how we could do it better. And that as we look to the future, we know we're not returning to a previous way. We're not returning to some kind of old normal. And that it's really more complicated than a simple reset. A lot of people have talked about, is this a reset, right, as we're coming out of the pandemic? And what does that mean? And we're really committed to building and rebuilding as we think about student well-being, both working to better support our staff and always focusing on our students. So that's all while we're focused on equity. One of the things that ETHS, I think, is really proud of is our critical consciousness as we think about that. And that is really an antidote to depression and oppression. So when we're talking about building the skills and mental health, we know that that's about decisions, about crises, about walking through trauma, but it's also about hope. So that's what we're going to walk through now. As you can see here, our students, as part of our five essentials, reported that 89% of students feel that they treat each other with respect, and 96% of students feel they are treated with respect by teachers. And respect is so critical, and really when we think about social-emotional learning, respect is one of the ways to harness students' desire for its status, for peer influence, and to really provide that purpose for learning, for relevance. So it's also about listening. And when we think about it, not just for students, but for our staff and with each other, that a genuine sense of listening to what each person has to say marks the basis for meaningful social interactions. So we don't want to forget that ever. In terms of thinking about our school goals and our benchmarks, our outcome measure on attendance, you can see last year, we had 97% average daily attendance rate. And we were really proud of that because a sense of belonging when we were remote and when we were hybrid was critical. And it also shows from our five essentials, 91% of our students strongly agree that teachers work hard to make sure students stay in school. And we witness that every day, but it's really great to celebrate that. And what we, of course, are striving for is whenever we see high numbers, we recognize that some students may not be feeling that way, and we're going to continue to pay attention to that, too. We also wanted to note that while we see these high numbers, one of the things we've been reflecting on a lot is first semester this year versus first semester two years ago, pre-pandemic. And overall, our average unexcused absence rate has actually remained steady. And as we think about further the attendance outcome measure, it's by no mistake. I think we all worked really intentionally. Last year alone, we did 205 home visits. I say "we" because that's our truancy officer, our grade-level teams, and a lot of the people that you see right around here, leaders who did home visits to reengage students and pull them in. So we're really proud of that. We're also proud of our attendance rates, even broken down by subgroups, recognizing that many of our subgroups are above the 95% state threshold, and there are a few who are not, which means that we need to work even harder to figure out how we can continue to engage all students. You can see 94.8% for our Latinx, 94.6% for our Black African-American, 91.6% for students with IEPs, and 94% for free reduced. So we're really committed to all the ways that we were last year focusing on reengaging. As we've considered redeployment, you all know this because we gave some snapshots along the way, but when you look at that total, we had 18,000 phone calls that were made home for intervention to engage with families and to help students refocus on engaging in school. And then we also had a lot of leaders and support staff make phone calls home before school even started and during second quarter. And that really represents everyone from dean teams to attendance teams to leaders and support staff. So we were really pleased with the amount of, again, pivoting.
It's a lot of calls, and we were happy to do it. Holding on to our students helps us, and during these tough times, is very important because we want everyone to feel like they belong. And sometimes we have to rebuild that sense of belonging as needed. It is our experience and not just the research, it shows our capacity to connect with students, builds, building students' physical and emotional health and safety, belonging and connectedness, and the academic challenge and engagement is really important, which impacts graduation rates. So our four-year graduation rate increased from 93.3% for the class of 2021 from 93.1% for the four-year graduation rate of the class of 2020. And while the state four-year graduation rate is 86%, our five-year graduation rate is 94.4%, while the state five-year graduation rate is 89.3. Our dropout rate was 1.5%, and 89% of our students strongly agree that high school is seen as preparation for the future. And the pandemic impacted many student perceptions, and we're committed to not just preparing students for the future, but helping them see the relevance of high school each and every day. Holding on to our student, no matter what, makes a difference, including pulling back, students back into ETHS after they've withdrawn from ETHS. The voices of our students and parents are critical, and we want to share a couple of voices about their experiences this year. One person says, "It was a positive impact. My teacher helped me understand the subjects I was having issues with. It was one-on-one lecture on certain subjects I had problems understanding. It helped me get back on track with what I needed to and helped me use my time wisely," another person said. "The positive atmosphere of the alt school really helped me to continue to push to finish. I had teachers that motivated me to work. It made it easier to work because classes were small and my teacher was able to help everyone." So 91% of our students felt prepared in relation to post-high school planning. And for three years in a row, 89% to 91% of our graduating seniors felt prepared for post-high school plans. 92% of senior, graduating seniors reported strongly agreeing or some were agreeing that they were able to access their counselor when they needed support. 88% of our seniors plan to attend a four-year or two-year college. Last year, this is an interesting number, 6,782 transcripts were requested for college application process for scholarships compared to 4,965 transcripts the previous year. A breakdown for attending a four-year university can be found in the packet. So ETHS coordinated, collaborated with the city of Evanston and collaborated with the Career Pathway Information Sessions, which are monthly seminars for students and families, and that continued through COVID-19, including apprenticeships, trades, and there were sessions on manufacturing, human public safety, information technology, finance, business, health sciences and technology, agriculture, food and natural resources, arts and communication. The seniors had ICIT, Summer Paid Internship Program, and a YJC Pathway Program session information. We worked with all school staff and our alt school students with post-high school planning, and we collaborated with Oakton Community College and the YJC with seniors and followed up with graduating, graduated seniors. ETHS Career Pathway Fair this year is on March 16th, during the day with over 30 community partners to discuss career opportunities. And we're continuing to move barriers to online resources such as recording events from financial aid to college planning information and School Links College and Career Platform Planning, Planning Platform and the Career Options Night. 58% of our students participated in one of more extracurriculars. You have got a little bit of this in our Extracurricular Activities Report this fall, and we're continuing to make adjustments to that, improvements in that, as the pandemic was a complicating factor, but we still had a good percentage of students who we were able to capture participating in extracurriculars. in extracurriculars. 91% of our students strongly agree that teachers work hard to make sure that all students are learning. And 93% of our students strongly agree that their teachers want them to become better thinkers and not just memorize things, because we know that's good instruction. And our GPA, the cumulative, cumulative unwed GPA for our senior class was 3.17 on a 4.0 scale. As we work to build culture and care through instruction, we also work on interventions in the classroom, social, emotional, and academic learning, the relationship development, and a variety of structured supports. 27, and this relates to discipline, 27%, not 27%, 27 students in 2000 and 2001 who received a total of 47 restorative actions and no suspension. This was reflected in the disciplinary report. And we continue our commitment to defining discipline from a learning perspective. And we have continued to focus on not just the number of discipline referrals, but how to access resources, learn new skills, and make better decisions. So our culture of climate and care, we know that the pandemic has, as I said, has done a job on our, on our community, our culture, our nation, and us here locally. And I just kind of want to take a second here to acknowledge that we value our students, we value our staff, we value our parents and our community. But this, the past two years, not just the past year, has made this message very complex as we have navigated a series of very difficult decisions and complex circumstances and all of that. And it's come at a time that has made us all feel very vulnerable, right? Our wellness, we felt very vulnerable. Our health, we've all felt vulnerable, and we were vulnerable. And given the racial violence that we've also seen in the past two years, there's been an increased and a compounding sense of vulnerability. And so the message of care gets really complicated, especially as it relates to, do you see me? Do you care about me? When are all of these other factors that are at play? And I think I just wanted to take time, and Dr. Kenzie and I, we just wanted to really make the time to say, we do care and we understand how complex this really is. So our well-being survey for students given March 2021 highlights some challenges, where 30% of students reported stress impacted by daily activities for 11 or more days in a row, for 11 days or more in a previous month. 30% of students report feeling sad or hopeless every day for two or more weeks, preventing them from doing usual activities. And 36% of students report having trouble falling asleep at least three times per week. Our used access supports, with 29% of students reporting that they are seeking out support for mental health in the community, and this includes 19% of male students, 35% female identifying students, 75% of students who identify as non-binary or transgender, 44% white female students, 47% female students identifying as two or more races.
A little bit more about our well-being survey from March of 2021. As you can see here, we've highlighted a couple more pieces, and this is specific to substance use. We wanted to start by looking at perceptions of peers versus self-reported actions. And it's worthwhile to note that while 58% of students believe that no more than 50% of students use cannabis in the last 30 days, 84% of students reported not having used cannabis in the last 30 days prior to the survey. It's also important to note, as we think about this, 98% of students reported not having used someone else's prescription drugs in the last 30 days. And we wanted to note these pieces because we are going to continue to pay attention to substance use. We know it's another area that has really exploded during the pandemic, and it's an area of concern for all ages, for adults as well as for youth. So, and we also recognize when there are strengths of not using. When we look at guidance and substance use, 84% of students reported that they had not used tobacco, alcohol, or drugs not prescribed to them in the last 12 months. And that was up from 72% in March of 2020. In terms of students who are most likely to report having used substances in the last 12 months, we saw that white students were more likely to report that they've used substances, and white female students were the most likely to report having used. The other piece we wanted to emphasize was, as we think about guidance, how we message use is important at ETHS, as it is in the home as well, with 73% of students reporting that their families have clear rules that do not allow alcohol and drug use. As we look forward now, we're really going to reflect on needs and connecting to resources as we think about the 2021 school year. We did do a significant increase, you can see this, in seven years. We had 167% increase in the number of individual 504 plans. Last year alone, we had 1,958 visits to Health Services, and that was both in-person, when we were in-person and hybrid, but it was also remote engaging in students' physical and medical health by our Health Services team. Our psychiatric hospitalizations, you can see, we had 106 unique students, so that means individual students who were psychiatrically hospitalized, which was actually a decrease from 116 the year before. However, we had 26 students who experienced multiple hospitalizations, increasing from 12 the year before. That's consistent with our experience also this year, as we reflect on the needs of students being even more complicated. We had 476 social work referrals, which was consistent with the year before. And as we reflect on our COVID journey, we just wanted to note that journey included so many facets, even last school year, remote, hybrid. Now we're at in-person, and we experienced an adaptive pause in in-person this year. But also wanted to note the collaboration that we experienced and the support from our school-based health center, our medical advisory board, our Evanston Health Department, as we continue to be guided in moving forward. Our proof-of-vaccination rates with staff at 95% and students at 94% is tremendous. We are continuing our COVID testing as one of the mitigation strategies through our PE and Wellness classes. And we're continuing contact tracing, at this time continuing the highly recommended mask wearing, at this time mitigation strategies are strongly in place. And as we're looking to needs, we're also looking at resources and services. And so we wanted to make sure to emphasize, you can see on the right-hand side of this slide is a reflection of, and this is something we reported a little bit on this fall and have additional information now, our suicide risk assessments. When we compare this school year from two years ago for school year 2020, you can see for the semester, first semester of 2022, we had a 71% increase in the number of suicide risk assessments compared to first semester 2020. As we break that down further, what we saw was, when we returned to all-in-person first quarter 2022, we had 104% increase compared to first quarter 2020. Second quarter, we saw a 39% increase. Third quarter this year compared to two years ago, we actually have seen a 75% decrease compared to third quarter two years ago. And so what our teams are really seeing is fantastic identification of students' needs so that we can be supporting them in the right way. And we are truly committed to that in an ongoing fashion. As you can see, the numbers, while being complicated and the needs being complicated, being addressed fully. In terms of our homebound first semester of 2022, we had 35 students. That was up 32 from two years ago. We typically would not have many students in the homebound instructional experience. And then as we think about connecting to more resources, because we just shared a lot of startling data, we're also reflecting on the ways that we're meeting student needs, whether that's through the Student Assistance Program and all of the prevention work that is school-wide, in classes, in curriculum, in evening events, our social work groups, the individual case management and crisis work, but also in terms of positions. We were so fortunate that we had, in school year 2021, two new social work positions. And this school year, we have two new 504 case management positions, further allowing individuals who are providing direct services in mental health to focus on that act of the mental health. So further streamlining that, in the same way, case managers and instructional facilitators for students with IEPs were able to streamline further. And we actually just finished last week our in-person Signs of Suicide with our freshmen. And we'll be reporting on that more. We weren't able to do that in-person the last couple of years. But we did do other ways of embedding the work for the curriculum. Signs of Suicide is that nationwide curriculum that both identifies, focuses on depression as well as suicide prevention. And last week, our 32 mental health professionals, ETHS mental health professionals, were able to support the Signs of Suicide program with screening for all freshman students. And our leadership team helped out, too. We want to just take another moment to honor our students and all that they create, whether that's performances, or art, or debate, and awards that they've won. We just wanted to focus on our students, who are our center. We also wanted to take a moment just to highlight an example of one of the many ways we embed social emotional learning into curriculum. Our PE and Wellness team has really led that. And we know that many other departments are working on doing the same in terms of embedding social emotional learning. Specifically, our Emotion Identification and Regulation curriculum that we've done specifically with Dr. Rosick, who is a professor at Washington University and has done this in collaboration with Stanford University. The focus on this has been throughout the school year last year, and it was really focused on assessing students' well-being, hearing about their lived experiences, designing and implementing social emotional learning activities in class to bolster student well-being during and after the pandemic. And the in-class activities were really to prevent depression, loneliness, and low motivation. And students, what we found is that students who completed the in-class social emotional activities reported fewer depressive symptoms, higher levels of academic motivation, and greater use of emotional regulation skills. And after completing activities, students often were able to reflect on decision-making and how they thought about their emotional experience, feeling more positive and less negatively about the situation that made them upset, and a reduction in the intensity of the negative thoughts. And they also reported that they liked developing the skills that they could use more broadly in their lives to cope with upsetting situations. One of the strongest predictors of students' mental emotional well-being was their physical health also. Exercise, eating, sleeping habits, how all of these interplay. And understanding that when we think about social emotional learning skills, like they are for all of us, they are like muscles. The more we use them, the more they become stronger. And a student shared that they used these techniques they had learned in PE even during the lockdown to cope. As we think about this, many school-wide practices we have in embedding SEL and equity, we know, again, that this has not been an easy journey. And we reflect on last school year, there was pain, there was grief, increasingly complicated mental health needs as well as physical health needs. And we know that staff really took tremendous acts of kindness, of dedication, really going the extra mile for our students to engage in all facets of, as you can see, all the services provided, as well as the professional development that staff engaged in. We know that this is a long report, so we don't want to keep you all too much longer. But we also know the evening programs that we expanded last year, building upon our Family Talk Series, our College and Career Series, and added many new pieces, including, as Dr. Campbell mentioned, our career pathways, our navigating COVID-19 evening events around grief as well, around suicide prevention. We're committed to all of these elements. From a school-wide perspective, this year, we've been able to introduce Black Brown and Breathing, our open studio, and continue with so many other pieces that we had in place last year. And as we close for this presentation, we'd like to say thank you. Thank you for listening. We've sat here many times saying how hard this has been for students, for staff. So we want to say thank you for listening to us as well, for understanding that we are committed to creating a culture of care, that we are committed to working to do better right now and in the future, to help heal, to show respect, and to prioritize well-being, and that the how we engage with each other is a critical part of well-being for healing for our students, for our staff, because together we will continue to do this. And in the words of Brené Brown, "When we have the courage to walk into our own story and own it, we get to write the ending." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Thank you for the, all those great, very important details. And thank you for being realistic about the impact these last couple of years have had on our students. One of my thoughts and questions as I was looking through the report and realizing how much students are utilizing the social work and the mental health facilities, I'm just wondering about our capacity to support them? Do we, do we have the staff? I know that we were always concerned about that, but are we able to meet the needs of our students right now?
I'll start off in answering that question, and Dr. Campbell has anything to add, feel free. So I think we all had that question in mind and continue to ask ourselves those questions. On the one hand, we have a tremendous capacity in our school with 32 mental health professionals. I really don't know any other high school that has put forth that level of commitment to mental health and to prioritizing our students' mental health. And we also know the needs are intense, so we are truly continuing to pay attention. There, our social work team and as well as our psychologists and counselors truly working so hard, and we're continuing to assess levels of need and responsiveness even in the community. So we've been really glad that the teams have been able to be so responsive through till now.
I just might add, our team, which is, as I think you can guess, I mean, I hope you were looking at that list and thinking, you know, these aren't people sitting around drinking coffee. I mean, they are putting in hours and hours and hours, serving students individually and groups, families, and the like. But we also really have to depend on the community. We need the community, and we do a lot of referrals, many referrals, but we need that kind of capacity, not only in the high school, but in the community, so that the community is wrapping its arms around the families and the young people and basically the citizens of Scovinston School Districts, because, as Taya is pointing out, the commitment is huge. But one high school cannot possibly provide all those services and all that support that a community needs. And so I just want to keep emphasizing that this has to be a community effort, and we need to be doing our part.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I think- I think there's another important component of all of this, which is our constant partnership with community agencies and their own experience with at times being depleted and then rebuilding their numbers of staff. And so we're really glad that we are able to make referrals to agencies right now who are looking for referrals, as well as acknowledging that for many places, there are waiting lists, but we continue to work with our agencies to partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
So first, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we as a community and as individuals, I think, have sort of a visceral and anecdotal understanding, but seeing these numbers, seeing the number of students hospitalized and being evaluated for suicidal tendencies and so forth, it's just overwhelming. And so I just want to acknowledge that and acknowledge our students who are experiencing that and their families, as well as you and all the wonderful staff that are in their own stress and, you know, over the last couple of years, just being there for our students. And that just is overwhelming and a terrific reminder of how great this community is and how wonderful our staff is. So I wanted to acknowledge that. But I have two questions. One is, in the document, in the report, you talked about bringing SEL into the classroom, into more the, you know, math and history and English, all the classes. And I wanted to know if you could talk a little bit about some examples of what that looks like and what is the professional development and also the support for teachers who, you know, usually are teaching English and really, and not to say they don't care about the students, of course, they always have, but this is different. This is a new landscape. And so can you talk about what that looks like in the classroom and what we're doing to support our teachers? And is this our new normal? Will we continue this kind of work, this kind of professional development going forward?
Sure. So in terms of social emotional learning, I know that's an area that is not going to go away. We know that pre-pandemic, thinking about social emotional and academic learning actually has a tremendous return on investment from academic performance perspective, as well as from a mental health wellbeing perspective. So we know that this is going to continue to support students. There are many ways that we're working to embed it within the professional development, whether that's our induction process with new staff, reading, book reads such as, you know, SEL lessons every day in the classroom. So there's a variety of ways that we want to help understand what are the ways that we can think about an SEL lesson that isn't an explicit identification per se necessarily of depression. Here's your screener, but rather, right? And we have those too, but rather identifying, okay, how are you solving problems? How are we solving problems today in small groups in math class? How are we navigating conflict? How are we continuing to develop that as a classroom community? And how are we building those skills when we're lacking them? And just as we all are doing every day. And so in terms of thinking about the many ways, our PE and Wellness Department has really led the way in so many ways in the last couple of years and been flexible about incorporating. But I know all departments are really putting forth this effort. Dr. Campbell and Dr. Beavis may even want to add some additionals to that because there are many steps that we've taken for professional development. One of them includes our teacher-to-teacher toolkit, really thinking about that peer-to-peer conversation, thinking about our instructional coaches and their support as well.
Yeah, we've also hired folks, consultants, experts who know how to breathe and have taught our teachers how to breathe, so that our teachers can teach our students how to breathe, and engaging more mindfulness practice in the classroom, not as a one-off or here or there, but it's something that is a part of a daily practice in the classroom. With the block, with the school going to a block schedule with 85 minutes, it's given an opportunity to really pause, you know, to reflect, to slow down, and to process and to breathe. And so many of our departments, the academic departments, have been going through training, have been modeling themselves. It's something that we try to do. I think it gets away from us occasionally, but really, really making it a part of our day-to-day habits has worked for our kids. And I really think that we've certainly navigated a lot of challenges, behaviorally, instructionally, but had we not front-loaded it as much as we did, we would be in a much different place regarding what our students are experiencing. So those are some of the other things that we've done, much more mindfulness practice in each classroom.
Another element of social emotional learning in the classroom is our work with the Democratic Classroom. We have over, well, it's close to 200 faculty trained in the Democratic Classroom practices. Our department chairs and deans are being trained in that. And really what that does is it embeds social emotional learning in a student-centered way, where students actually take on leadership roles within the classroom, and that's been very, very effective. And we started that work way before the pandemic and have been able to continue that and develop that out. Those are just a couple of examples.
That's great. Thank you. And just one more question, it's sort of a really broad, but you've talked about all these wonderful things that are new or are stronger now. And I just was reflecting as I was reading the report that at the beginning of the year, I think, Marcus, you said that we were going to really work on being, educating in a more humane way and being more of a humane environment. And I guess, now that we're sort of at the middle of the year, towards the end, I guess, just what is that like? What are the connecting the dots on that? Like, what's been different because you had that vision? What's still to come because we've recognized how much more we need? I mean, I'm just curious, given that, I was really struck by that as a really powerful way to frame things. And I guess, you've talked about a lot of specifics, so it's not that it's obvious that you're doing that, but like, how is that thinking kind of evolving and influencing you?
I think it still is. I think one thing that I can say over the course of the year that we've learned is that we're all human beings, right? Complex, you know, some days are good, some days are not. Some days we're afraid and we have courage, and some days we have courage, and some days we are afraid, and some days we're both. And I think that I've certainly, many folks have been trying to model that humanity and that vulnerability, because that's what it is. It's modeling our vulnerability, our hopes, our fears, and not acting like everything is okay all the time, because it's not. And I think that we have had a lot of people to do that. We've taken time and department meetings to do that, just let's stop the agenda and let's really just talk about how we're feeling, right? And let's talk about what that really means and how we move forward. Let's stop the classroom space and talk about how we're feeling. And that is, of course, it's ongoing, because I think there's still a lot to learn from each other that, yeah, we are human beings. I am a human being. And I think that that lesson is something that we'll continue to work on as we move forward, because it doesn't happen overnight. And we've certainly gotten it right this year and last year, and we've certainly missed it a few times as well. So that's something that we'll continue to strive for, is our humanity and understanding what that means.
Great. Thank you both and to all the people behind you that are doing all this great work. We really appreciate you.
Liz?
I just wanted to say thank you for the very detailed memorandum that you sent to us. It was chock full of really good information, and I'm so glad I was able to see that. I'm so impressed with how broad your student services are and your interventions, just reading about, you know, everything from academics to food insecurity to sexual harassment. I mean, it just seems like you've covered so many bases with this, and I'm so grateful for that. I guess I did have one question about, was looking at the incident reporting form that I'm assuming is on our website. What does the process look like after somebody submits one of those forms?
Sure. So the incident reporting form is intended to be kind of just one of many vehicles to raise any concern around a complaint or an experience of harassment. And actually, it was driven from students. So rather than simply having to maybe tell a teacher or tell a social worker or a counselor or psychologist or a dean, this was another vehicle to make it as a safe avenue for communicating kind of an initial concern. So when that does get completed, we walk through, really assessing and identifying what is the need, what is the concern, who follows up with the student? Is that a social worker who follows up with the student? Is it a concern specific to the ETHS environment, and it includes the dean process, as well as additional supports for mental health? And is it a situation where we can support the student individually, even through mental health and maintain confidentiality? Or is it a situation where we need to make sure that the parents are also looped in from a safety perspective? So there's a lot of if, then, if then kind of processes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you again for all this great work you're doing with students. And again, I just really appreciate how candid the report is, how thorough and how candid it is. So it just gives me, I think, a complete picture of what you are doing to support students' wellbeing in this institution. It's real. It's real, and so I appreciate that. So thank you. Thank you both.
I'd just like to give a shout out to the board, too. You know, you have four clear goals. You could have 104, but you understand how important it is that the district understands from you what matters most and what you want to see done. And as has been referenced over and over in this report, this is all about goal two that you set, that you set for wellbeing in this school. And I just want to say, you can see from Dr. Kinsey, Dr. Campbell, and everything, this school is fully committed to this kind of work. But it's fully committed because this school board has said, of our four goals, this is one of the high priorities that has to be addressed. So I just want to give a big thank you to this board.
Thank you. Thank you, Boyd. All right. So we're moving right along in student supports. We're going to hear about some other really important work to connect with so many of our students.
And we have a dynamic team here tonight. And I don't know, Kiwan, Pete, I don't know who's going to start moderating, but I'll let you kind of take over from there and fill it in for the board.
No, happy to do it. First of all, I am joined at the table by Dr. Kiwan Brown, our Director of Academic Supports, and Tanisha White, our Avid Director. And, you know, as we've talked about in previous reports, the 2021-22 school year is a reset. We saw just now, earlier tonight, evidence of the very real challenge our students face this year and for the years to come. Academic supports play an important role in nurturing our students. And this year is actually the first year that in-person academic supports are under one centralized umbrella. And we're here to talk that through this evening. So briefly, and I don't have my glasses on because I can't wear them with the mask, but why is it important that academic supports fall under one umbrella? Well, we offer multiple layers of support for students and meet students' needs where they are. That allows the opportunity to see the gaps in needed supports for students in areas of improvement as we attempt to provide wraparound supports for all students. That's significant wraparound supports for all students, and you're going to hear more about that this evening. Academic supports are how students clear tardy detentions. That's something new and very exciting. Thus marrying the restorative nature of clearing detentions for tardies to class with the ability to receive academic supports and achieve academic success. That's one of the levers, and we've seen some pretty promising results from that change. And finally, and this is the most important, this is the headline. The success of academic supports is built upon the relationships that students build with their teachers and staff throughout the various spaces in the building. Only through building strong relationships can we provide those wraparound supports and hold students in loving accountability while they're here at ETHS. So here we go. We're going to provide an overview this evening of the current academic supports here. We're going to talk about AM Support, Homework Center, Peer Tutoring, Avid, Stay, Academic Study Center, Wildkid Academy. And we'll also do a little bit on our reading, school reading specialist, which you've heard about before, but we're going to reference because it's a very important component of what we do and how we do things here at the high school. So AM Support provides an opportunity for students to receive academic help before the start of the school day. During this time, teachers are available in their classrooms from 8:00 to 8:25 each school day. And we started this years ago. We've seen great results. What I have here is a graphic of the detention clearance. In quarter one, we cleared 990 detentions. And in quarter two, we cleared over 1,000 detentions. And remember, that's not everybody who goes to AM Support. Those are only the students who actually had detentions that needed clearing. So it's far more students are availing themselves of that support, but we felt it was really important to elevate this detention clearance aspect as we go through the report. Next, you see our Homework Center. The Homework Center is available to students Tuesdays through Thursdays from 3:45 to 5:00 PM. In the Academic Study Center, East 212, the Homework Center is open to all students and allows them to receive help with completing both homework and other school assignments. And students can receive support in English, reading, math, science, and history during that time. One observation, this is in the report, is that students who are English language learners are utilizing this service at a higher frequency than other students. Typically, students who attend homework assignments are repeat students who rely upon their relationships and the trust of the staff in this space to receive assistance. And it's also important, now you note that there are some detention clearances there, but less than 1% of the students who attend the Homework Center are on tardy probation. So that's significant. Students who are attending the Homework Center because they want to be there, there's a sense of community and support. And that really gets, you know, again, that's all about building relationships and having that loving accountability that comes with that. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brown for Peer Tutoring.
So good evening. I wanted to just reiterate the fact that we use tardy detention clearance as a way to show you the students who were attending, but also, I wanted you to look at it as not a punitive thing, but to see the positive aspect in it, because these are students who would typically maybe attend detention after school or, you know, at another time where they're just there kind of twiddling their thumbs, maybe doing some homework, maybe not. But now they have an opportunity to go and build relationships with people. And so these students are actually attending these different centers multiple times. And so they're working with these teachers and these staff, and they're able to build these relationships. And so when we talk about wraparound supports for students, they're getting this, the SEL, they're getting the, all the academic support, all the other supports that they need to be successful. So that's why we wanted to frame this in the way of looking at this as, you know, not looking at detention clearance as punitive, but looking at it as an opportunity for students. And so another way that we can do that is through our peer tutoring. And we don't offer detention clearance for this one, but we wanted to be able to show you the number of students, the mask was going into my eyes, the number of students who are peer tutors and the number of matches that we're able to do. So peer tutoring is provided for students grades nine through 12. They can request to be matched with a peer tutor through a whole Google form process. And we have a peer tutoring coordinator, Ms. Avani Kantar, who matches the students based on the availability of tutors, as well as what the students need and the students' grade in the class. So priority is often given to students who are So priority is often given to students who are in more dire need of the tutoring versus a student who just wants some extra support if there are a low number of tutors available in that content. So we had approximately sixty tutors last year about this time and thirty matches. This year, we doubled the amount of peer tutors. We had over a hundred and thirty tutors who want, students who wanted to be peer tutors this year, did the training and everything. But we've only had about fifty matches, which means we haven't had a whole, high number of students who wanted to have peer tutors, but they've been taking advantage of the other services in the building when we've asked like why the numbers are different this year.
Is this thing on? Okay. Hello, everybody. I have the pleasure of talking to you all, engaging in some dialogue about Avid. I know some of you know what Avid is about, but I'll just give you a brief overview for those who don't. It stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination, and it is a four-year college prep. It's an elective class where the focus, do I have to click this? Okay. The focus is on writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. We focus on study skills, on social-emotional learning, on helping to level the playing field so that race is no longer a predictor for academic success. We provide tutoring and small study groups once a week, and they meet with their Avid elective teachers three days a week. In the best scenario, students are looped with the same peers for all four years, and they have the same Avid teacher for all four years. Students are invited to participate in the program. They're invited as eighth-grade students to complete the application and interview process. We also highly recommend summer school as a way of helping them to take some classes in the summer to just provide more flexibility in scheduling during their junior and senior years. So it's not a requirement, but it is highly suggested. Here are a couple of photos. We found that it's been a welcome experience for folks to see happy students. So we have taken advantage of the opportunity that students love to take photos of themselves. And then I love to take photos of them and show them themselves. So on my left here, we have Senior Alize Ramirez. We call her the GOAT, for those of you who don't know what that stands for. That's the greatest of all times. She is an amazing student and athlete. She's one of our stellar Avid seniors. She's also on the Avid Leadership Board. She's standing there with Ms. Teresa Granito, science teacher. We welcomed our students back into the building this year who were in Avid with a fun collaborative opportunity for them to see each other again, be outside, enjoy the sunshine that we had back in August, and they tie-dyed their Avid t-shirts and made them one of a kind. In the middle, we invited students to come into the senior courtyard and enjoy a social so that they can, again, we lean into the social-emotional learning in Avid always, but even more so during the pandemic. And so only students in Avid got a chance to say that they watched a movie in the senior courtyard in the middle of the summer as a way of getting to know each other and reconnecting after being remote. And then on the right, Luis Sanchez and Tony Lulay are two other students that are seniors that are fantastic, rocking it. Tony, on the first day of senior year, got his first acceptance to college letter, and we cried and celebrated and laughed, and it was just a wonderful experience for all of us and him. On the second slide, we have seniors in their study peer group that they are engaged in on a weekly basis. And then on the right, I love this picture so much because most of them don't have their cell phones in their hands. They actually were talking to each other and happy to be enjoying each other's company. They were on a college field trip earlier this school year. And one of the things you'll notice about the Avid program and any Avid class, when you walk into that space, you know you're in a special place because it is true diversity in every way. Some recent data, sixty-four percent of our freshmen earn the honor roll for first semester. That's honor or high honor roll. Seventy-three percent of sophomores earn the honor roll. Fifty-six percent of juniors and seventy percent of seniors, because they always like to show the juniors that they have big shoes to follow, big footsteps to follow in. And just as a fun fact, over sixty-two percent of our students across the grade levels in Avid have a cumulative GPA of three point three or higher in the Avid program. So as a visual, I just wanted to show you those same stats as a bar graph, and just to highlight that the sophomores this year were the students that did their first year at E T H S via remote. And I'm just so proud of the students in the Avid program because during the, at the height of the pandemic, and it has held true, they're consistently performing well. As a matter of fact, they performed, they took it up a notch during the pandemic, which we know that that's not how students have fared across the nation. But in the Avid program, where they're getting the extra support, the teachers know the students by name, they know their situations, they have, they put eyes on them on a regular basis, they're interacting with them, not just for a semester or a year, but for multiple years. They have had the opportunity to really connect with them, and that has helped the students to thrive even when there were very challenging times. Additionally, our graduating seniors have earned more than two million dollars in scholarships, and they're not done. We still have the E T H S scholarship announcements to be had in May. I will say, last year, we cleaned up, a third of the scholarships went to students in Avid, and rightfully so. They have worked really hard for them. Ninety-nine percent of our students go to two or four-year universities after graduating from E T H S. Occasionally, one will go into the workforce, or into the military, or take a gap year. But mostly, they all go to college because that is the goal of the program. And after four years of talking, learning, visiting, reflecting on the college-going process, they are ready. Ninety percent of students in Avid that graduate from E T H S and go to college are still enrolled in college after two years. And seventy percent of the students that do that at any school in Illinois are still in college after two years, and seventy-four percent for E T H S. So E T H S does better than the state, but students in Avid from E T H S do better than everybody. Just a mama, proud mama moment. There is some goals that I would like to mention to the board. That's what that next section is. And one of the goals that we have is to increase the percentage of students being supported by Avid by at least two and a half percent each year until we reach and maintain a minimum of ten percent of the population being serviced. The Avid program is a response to the minority student achievement gap. The program is available for anybody that's qualified. It was created for students of color, but any student can be a part of the Avid program provided they meet the qualifications and complete the entry process. So with a school of thirty-five hundred students, we should have at least three hundred and fifty students in the Avid program every year. We know that it's a successful program that works. This is our twenty-sixth year at E T H S and forty-second year as a national program. So we currently are servicing a hundred and eighty students, and that has been about the same for the last few years, between two hundred and ten to a hundred and eighty. We can definitely service more students. Another goal is to increase the exposure to more career options over the four-year experience. This is a college program, but we do want to expose students to more career options. And so that is definitely a goal this year and the next year. And then we are making a seamless transition from the middle school Avid program to the high school Avid program. So in case any of you missed it, District Sixty-Five did adopt Avid as a program in middle schools this year. They started in the sixth grade level. Dr. Brown and myself have been working with District Sixty-Five on implementing that program there. And you'll see some of our faces, our student faces, in their promotional video as well. And so when students come in as Avid students into our school, it's just going to strengthen our program and our relationship with District Sixty-Five. Thank you. And this, I'll let this video speak for itself, but this is just an opportunity to see some of the fun things that we do in Avid. Of that, that's Avid. Thank you.
So thank you, Ms. White.
Oh, I have one other thing. I'm so sorry, Dr. Brown. So we call our allies in Avid teachers that are not Avid teachers and administrators that are part of the community of support for Avid. We call them part of the Avid Nation. So you see my mask, I'm rocking, it says Avid Nation at E T H S. And so one of our allies is Althea Brown. She's an academic intervention specialist. And she has an Avid mask, for those of you who don't have one, as a little token of our appreciation for your continued work and support of Avid and District Two-O-Two.
So thank you again, Ms. White. And I just want to add that this is the type of passion that I love for people on my team to have in all the academic supports in the literacy lab. This is the kind of passion that we bring, even though I, it saddens me to the very core that Ms. White is no longer going to be the coordinator as of next year. She wants to pursue other things. I'm trying to make her change her mind, but she won't. But that's the passion that drives, you know, the rest of us to stay on our toes. So thank you again, Ms. White, and thanks for your Avid service. We appreciate you.
So STAY, Steps Toward Academic Excellence, which is a four-year academic support program for students. It has a two-year guided study hall. The other two years, students are in electives and other courses, A P honors courses. It's facilitated by grade-level teachers, and the emphasis there is on study skills, organization, and time management. Teachers monitor students' academic progress over the first two years of guided study hall. This is also invitation-only based on certain criteria, but the commitment there is to help high-potential students, especially students of color, to achieve success in honors and A P classes. Some of the criteria for STAY is highly motivated. Students have to have the desire to be in honors and A P courses. Their eighth-grade math scores are also an indicator of admission, and then recommendations by middle school and E T H S placement team. There are currently a hundred and sixty-one students in STAY. This is the freshman and sophomore count, but there are a hundred and fifty juniors and seniors who are part of STAY. So just some information that's not on the slide about the STAY program is our students in STAY average, the total number of students who average C or higher in A P and honors classes are ninety-nine percent of the students receive high, C or higher in A P and honors classes in English, ninety-nine percent in history, ninety-seven percent in science, and ninety-seven percent in math. So those students are really achieving highly in STAY. All right, so we want to give you a little bit of information as well on the Academic Study Center. We mentioned it earlier. So the Academic Study Center is in East Two Twelve. And again, this formerly was a series of study centers, but now it's one center consolidated into one space. So students have the ability to move flexibly around the space and receive support in different content areas. They're able to meet with their peer tutors as well during this time. And so I wanted to just give you a look at some of the participation. These are active sign-ins, so students who are not necessarily going in to receive detention clearance, but just students who come to the center. And this one is broken down by race. But we can see that for most of the demographics, it increases every quarter. And I even added third quarter to this one, although the others I only added first and second quarter because we're not done with third quarter. But I wanted to give you a look at how much this, the service has increased for students. And again, we're not even done with third quarter. This was, the numbers were taken halfway through third quarter. So you can see that we're even higher in the orange for third quarter than first and second. I'm sure there are some factors such as open campus and some other things, but this is also an ability for students to go in and make connections with teachers and have the time to just look at how the numbers have increased, like dramatically from second quarter to third quarter is like amazing. It just knocks me off my feet. And again, this one is by race. This one is by grade level. So we can see which grades of students are actually taking advantage of the study center. The grade nine students dropped a little bit during the third quarter, but again, this is the beginning, so the numbers could be higher now. But our tenth graders, eleventh graders, and twelfth graders, the numbers have increased greatly for third quarter. And then this is our detentions cleared through A S C for quarters one, two, and so far for quarters three. So again, this is an opportunity that students are taken to meet with peer tutors, to meet with teachers, to meet with other staff, to get academic support. So again, when we talk about this being a way for students to clear detentions, it's not just punitive. We're actually getting able to, we're actually able to see these opportunities that are provided for students to receive academic support, to move toward academic success, and to build relationships with students and staff. And this is just the total for quarters one and two. All right, our Wildkid Academy. So that's another one of our special spaces on Saturdays where students are able to come, any students, grade nine through twelve, as long as they're current students, to receive support in various areas. They can meet with teachers, other staff, peer tutors. They also receive free S A T prep. College and career planning support is there, executive functioning is there. There's also opportunities for S E L support. Again, peer tutoring, writing, content, different content areas. So students have the ability to come in and make up work, to come in and get extra tutoring, extra support, and they can also clear detentions during Wildkid Academy Saturday, so why not, right? So there were fourteen total Wildkid Academy Saturdays for this twenty-two school year. And Ms. McKinney, who is our Wildkid Academy Coordinator, does a fantastic job at finding different ways to make sure that students are safe and that students get the support that they need during Wildkid Academy. And Wildkid Academy clears eight tardy detentions per session. So there's a morning session, legitimately, there's two morning sessions, but one goes from eight to nine, sorry, to ten twenty-five, and the other is ten thirty to noon. And so students are able to clear eight detentions per session. And so this graph just shows for quarter one and quarter two, the number of detentions that students have cleared. Again, this is a Saturday. So the morning sessions are a little bit lower for quarter one because it's early, right? And then they've increased during session two, quarter two, and then the same thing for the second sessions. All right, so our School Reading Specialist, and I wanted to just give a little information about the work that Elizabeth Bramley has done, because she's done a great job at developing strong relationships with students, especially our students that, you know, have counted themselves out already. These students typically find their way to her. She has an awesome personality, and she supports them, and she supports collaboration with their teachers to make sure that they're getting the services that they need. She's also worked with us to provide like informal assessments for individual students who may need some extra support for teachers, and she provides instructional support for teachers as well to help those students in their classes. She's recently began to create a literacy newsletter with strategies and tips for classroom teachers. because we don't often have the time that we need for, you know, PD, to sit in the PD hour, one hour, two hours. So, she gives little tidbits that a lot of teachers have already asked her for further support. She also supports the work in the Literacy Lab, collaborates with District 65. We attempted to start the ETHS Literacy Leaders Tutoring Program. Didn't quite work out, but we're looking to successfully partner with them for the next school year. She's definitely created strong relationships with students and offered STL supports. She collaborates with World Languages to support ELL and our LTAL students, which has been a great opportunity for, to have a reading specialist who also has background in ELL, planning a family literacy night, and some other potential summer literacy events that we hope to have happen this summer, and then also just collaboration with content area teachers. So, she's been a huge support for our building for this year, and this is her first year here. And she's done so much already. But the work continues. So, even though we have all these things going on, there's still a lot to do, and these are some of the supports that we talked, that I talked about before last month in our literacy report. But Discovering Success Through Music, students take an inspiring road to success, or STARS, our northeastern collaboration with our reading program, Masters and Endorsement, our Drop Everything and Read, our Literacy Lab, our freshman and sophomore reading. So, those works continue to happen. But that is our academic support. We're open for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report, the thorough report. It's really great seeing all these supports and how they interact. So, Dr. Beavis, at the beginning, when you said that they're all under one umbrella, it sounds like they are still independent programs, but support each other? Can you explain that just a little bit?
They're under Kiwanis' umbrella. Literally. It's the first time we were able to do that, to get all of them consolidated under, under one leader. We're very fortunate for that. Geographically, we did take the study centers and put them in one space, and they were spread out around the building. Even when we had the hub, we had a couple that weren't centrally located. We've located all those in one space.
So, now, they're all upstairs?
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And I just wanted to add that the strength in that also is that it makes it easier for us to locate students who need the most support. They may be going to the Academic Study Center, and there may, this may not be the best fit, but we're able to help them find something that works for them through the different supports. And with them being in different spaces, under different leadership, that's not always the easiest thing to do, but now we are able to be, to capture those students and give them the supports that they need in different environments.
Great. That makes sense. That's really helpful. Thank you. All right. Other questions? Pat?
Great report. Thank you. You know, what's the saying? You had me at Avid? You did. Yeah, yeah, yeah. As a parent of a user, of a student who was part of Avid, but also just your enthusiasm, which I don't believe he had when he was a student here. And just the program in general made a difference in his student education here. So, my question is, why don't we have more students in Avid? Like, what's preventing us from, because it seems like it's working, and we know we have students that need it? I don't know, Dr. Beavis, is that your question?
No.
Like, what's preventing us?
Couple of things. I think one is, one is the entry point from District 65, I think, is, is a challenge. I think we've done, we've taken strides. I think what we're going to see as we develop out the middle school Avid program, we're going to see a pipeline for Avid, and we will increase our numbers that way. But you can add to it if there's anything else. But I think that's a crucial aspect because it all starts in that transition from eighth to ninth grade. And if we back that up into seventh and eighth grade, and we develop a cohort of students with those relationships, we should be able to get better numbers.
That is true. That will definitely help support the numbers. And also, you know, we identified there are some structural things that we do in terms of scheduling that has happened in the last few years that really does not engage the students that need the program the most. For example, most of our scheduling is done by March for the next upcoming school year, and sometimes we don't get the spring test scores until May, which, you know, 45 to 85 students that qualify for Avid based on spring scores don't have access to Avid until sophomore year, when they really need to have it freshman year.
Sure.
So, that's a huge, you know, and some of that also will impact hiring because we have to hire teachers to be able to teach the program. And again, we're talking about hiring or planning for staffing for a class that may exist in May that doesn't exist in March. But we have enough years of data to plan for that and to anticipate that. And that's one of the things that I would, really would petition the district to make that a priority. I often have parents contact me in May and June, or even July, having just heard about the Avid program and really want their student in the program. And unfortunately, it's kind of too late at that point. Either the sections are already full, and there isn't another section going to be added, or either their schedule is already set. So, it's, and again, students that qualify for Avid based on spring scores and not winter scores are typically the ones that really would benefit from the program the most. That's one of the main places, I would say. We can really increase the numbers that way. Having District 65 families know about Avid and hear about Avid before eighth grade is also another avenue that we've been pursuing in the last couple of years, talking to the sixth-grade families and seventh-grade families so that by eighth grade of December, they, this isn't the first time they're hearing about Avid. And then, there's a short turnaround in terms of application, interview, acceptance, all of that, to be prepared for the very hard deadlines that we have as a district in February and March in terms of scheduling. Those are just a couple of places, I think. There also could be more consistency and transparency in student services in terms of how we articulate the Avid program to students, students wanting Avid, students needing Avid. How is that communicated? I'm very clear about the type of student who could benefit most, but I think there needs to be more consistency and transparency in student services about how it's marketed and what is told to students if they initiate the conversation or if they are a perfect Avid candidate, but they aren't being told about the program. So, there are some internal things that we could do differently, and there are some programmatic things that we could do differently.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that. I think that I am also the parent of an Avid student. We were talking about it over the weekend when I was reviewing all this. And she has great things to say about the program and how it supported and helped her get through high school. She came in as a freshman, and I'm just really thinking about how we can plan for students, knowing that we have to maybe save some spaces, although I know that's always a little complicated with sectioning, I know that firsthand. But I, but still, just kind of anticipating the students, even when they're in junior high, planning for those students when they get to the high school can be helpful.
And I'm wondering if, too, just the fact that it is an elective, and there are so many electives competing for students' attention, a high school like that, that maybe that, too, has some impact on it. And again, getting the word out about, you know, why this is such a great elective, obviously, as Tanisha says, is a big, a big goal.
Yeah, I'm wondering about some of those strategies that we use to help students talk to students, AP students talk to other students. If we could use some of those same strategies to encourage the students who are in Avid to talk to some of the younger students as they are planning their schedules.
Well, and it is so much about relationships.
Yep.
So, it definitely means having the right instructor or Avid instructor that can also create that atmosphere. We need more students in Avid.
Yeah, if you've got the space, for sure.
Okay, Pat? So, I'm all on board. I'm a huge fan of Avid and have been since someone who's been at this table for a long time was in charge of Avid many years ago. So, and your energy is awesome, and what can we do to keep you? We're with you, Ms. Brown, or Dr. Brown. We would certainly love to keep your energy and enthusiasm because that really helps. Your vision is very clear, and your compassion for the kids and the work is great. So, and I also, so I thank you, and I also want to thank you, Dr. Brown, who I realize you have been a part of three board meetings in a row, whether it's you personally or your work. And so, your energy and your creativity and your just real talent for figuring it out. I mean, I just, I love that. And so, I just want to be able to thank you personally because, you know, talking about the Literacy Center and all these things that you, Literacy Lab, all these things that you've shared over these last three months, and it's just amazing. So, and obviously, you hire well. So, really, really, thank you both. I have just sort of a little question because it's a sort of a passion for me, that the reading endorsement program, it said in the report that you have 11 people that have completed and six that are currently in the program. And I just wonder, can you give us a sense of what departments they come from? Because I was a history teacher, and every day I said, "I wish I was a reading teacher" because it would have helped a lot. So, can you just tell us, like, who's, what teachers are part of it, or a sample?
Yeah. So, as a history teacher, you're still a reading teacher. Throw that out there.
Right.
Everybody's a reading teacher.
No, I hear you, but I didn't have the, but I didn't have the endorsement to really have all that skill behind it.
Yeah, we have history currently. We've had completion in special ed, English, science. And I'm working more on some math teachers this year. But that's, it's pretty much been our special ed, history, English, and science.
That's terrific. Thank you.
But we have about 10 teachers who are interested slash signing up to become part of the next cohort in the fall. So, 10 more teachers. And those are kind of all over the place. World Languages, like, this is the first time we've had World Languages teachers. So, that's a new addition. That's exciting.
Thank you.
So, I'm also going to just say to Dr. Brown that I was able to get up to the Literacy Lab a couple of weeks ago, I don't know, two, three weeks ago, because I was really impressed by the space. And not only was I impressed by the space, but I got to meet your staff. And they are so committed. I think I was really very moved by their commitment to the students and their work and the team. And I even feel it tonight. This, the group of you are working together on behalf of the students and the team. So, thank you so much. It's really important to do the work, but to also work together in the process. So, thank you. And thank you for this amazing report.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing before I go? I will be so upset with myself if I didn't. You know, also, I'm happy to know about the parent, the parent allies in the room. I would love to get your, your words in writing and on video. But also, you know, I would, I would just ask that the board members and administrators use their platform to celebrate the success in Avid, you know, mention it from the stage, mention it in the reports because there is so much success. I've been around in the program long enough to see students who have gone to college and now work at ETHS. Our new school nurse is an Avid graduate. We have teachers at the high school who are Avid graduates and staff members. So, it's a very rewarding opportunity, life-changing opportunity in many cases for our students. So, if our admin could take charge and say, "You know what? I'm going to tell others about Avid. I'm going to mention Avid in these meetings and from this platform." That would also spread the word as well.
Thank you.
Will do. Thanks. Super. Great reports tonight. This is awesome. All right, Dr. Beavis.
All right. Next up is the textbook adoption and deletion. I do not have a PowerPoint, but I do have just a brief, just overview. There are several adoptions. There are two large, big-ticket adoptions. One is for our world history. Our world history text is currently out of print, and the digital version is no longer supported by the publisher. So, you'll see that, that is there. The other piece is, for the first time, we will have a wellness textbook, the Glencoe Health Book. It's a significant purchase. It's a purchase that the wellness teachers really rallied behind, given the nature of the topics that they are required to teach by the state, and being able to anchor that in a textbook to refer students to and to help guide the discussion of the topics that they're required to teach. So, that's also very positive. And the total is $138,000. I talked to Mary about the textbook expenditure. It's also important to note that we did not purchase textbooks. We didn't have new textbook purchases last school year. So, in that way, you know, we're sort of playing catch-up, but $138,000 is within the normal range of new adoption purchases. Oh, I also consolidated, just reporting-wise, I consolidated in the memo. You'll see the totals and everything, but you will also see, we used to have several, we used to have each textbook adoption, used to have a separate page that would go to it. I put those questions, the key questions that weren't, you know, what's the ISBN number? What's the cost per book? I consolidated the questions in a grid, and that's what that second table is in your report.
Thank you. I appreciate your report, and I liked the questions that you asked. Let's see if I can find the question. I should have had this up. Just really how the textbook engages students of color. I just really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to lift that up because I thought that was a very good thoughtful question and just an example of how we're thinking about this and making sure that we're touching all aspects of our curriculum. So, are there other questions, Board? Thank you, Dr. Beavis.
You bet.
All right. So, now, we're going to hear from Dr. Robinson. He comes up to hear, going to hear about the school calendars for 2022, '23, and 2023, '24.
Good evening, Board. How are you?
Good.
Always fun to come back this time of year to discuss the next two years of the calendar. I'm so happy and thankful of the committee who represented parents and staff from the school. We met five times throughout the year to really critically review the draft for next year and create a draft for the 2023-24 school year. And so, what I, what you have in your memos are just that, the finalized calendar for the 22-23 school year and a draft for the 23-24 school year. We did have an opportunity to collaborate with District 65, and this is the first time that we both have what we call a fall break. So, that's super exciting during the week of, that third week. So that's super exciting during the week of, that third week in November. Other notable changes for next year, the election day, and we also added Juneteenth on the summer calendar. You'll see that in the draft for the 23, '24 school year, those same additions with the exception of the election day. So with that, I'm super happy to answer any questions and just again thankful for the committee for their long, many hours of counting and getting the right days.
Questions from the Board? I just want to say that many, 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 many years ago, when I worked in District 65, I was on the school calendar committee. It was like one of the first committees I thought I would just join for, for something to do. And I was like kind of blown away by the amount of work and hours. This wasn't, this is not an easy committee to be on, to get agreement from both districts and make sure you get all the dates correct. It's important to our families.
Yeah.
To do this. So it's, it's not something to be taken lightly. I still remember like, oh, this is what it's like to be on a district committee. Wow. So it's a lot. So thank you for the hard work. I know this was a lot of work.
Thank you. And we met virtually the entire year.
Oh, my.
Which was, I think, probably the preferred way to do it.
Yes.
We, we just thought it was so efficient.
Yes.
And able to share, you know, digitally all of the documents.
Yes. Great. All right. Well, thank you once again and thank you to your committee for all this work.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Beavis. We are at item number six, comments from the public.
Yes, we have two comments from the public this evening. Public comments are three minutes. And yeah, we'll start with Lily Aaron. And what I'll do is I'll go three, two, one, and then when it beeps.
Cool.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Board members and administration. My name is Lily Aaron and I'm a senior at E T H S, the hub coordinator for E Town Sunrise, a board member of Citizens Greener Evanston, and I had the privilege of attending COP26 with a program called It's Our Future. You may remember me as I have addressed you on this issue before. Sadly, little has changed since I spoke here in December, but the climate crisis looms larger every day with the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change issuing a report even more dire than the last one. The impacts of climate change are accelerating at a faster rate than scientists expected and the need to act has never been more urgent. You are in a unique position to make a measurable difference in the face of this issue that will have the greatest impact on me and my peers. Tonight, I have come to stress the urgency of hiring a sustainability coordinator at E T H S. Clearly, the role of superintendent of District 202 is too large to incorporate additional responsibilities such as crafting a climate plan that will help E T H S and Evanston become carbon neutral by 2030, which is what science requires if we are to mitigate the gravest impacts of the climate crisis. As of right now, E T H S has no sustainability coordinator.
Two minutes.
Meaning that there is no way for the school to gauge student input on the climate crisis effectively and no one to meet with students to address their, to address their concerns. There is no way that students can fight for more meaningful climate policy if we are not met by someone who understands even the most basic aspects of E T H S's role in the climate crisis. As of this Wednesday, we will have finally gotten the Climate Curriculum Committee off the ground with the help of Dr. Beavis. Most E T H S students are not currently being empowered with the knowledge needed to address the climate crisis. That's why I'm here speaking to you once again. As leaders who care about the physical and mental health of young people, I am pleading with you to take action for present and future well-being. If your objections are budgetary, know that, that school sustainability coordinators usually make up their own salaries and savings for the district within one year. District 65 has committed to hiring one part-time this year and transitioning to a full-time position next year.
One minute.
There is absolutely no reason that we shouldn't follow suit. I wish to reiterate to you that at the core of the climate crisis is a push for social, racial, and economic justice. For too long, our asks have been pushed to the back burner. My classmates and I have spoken to this board numerous times and have yet to hear anything back. We have far too little time for this board to disregard all that's at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rick Kardas. So Rick, it's the same. It'll be three minutes and I'll count it down for you.
Okay. Thank you. Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to address an important issue for our community. Before I begin, I have a special shout-out to Barbara Tomoradz, whom I am fortunate to call my student. I know your role on the school board takes a lot of time and effort and vulnerability and I appreciate you, I see you, thank you. And I appreciate all of you because you volunteer your time and energy for this important job. My name is Rick Kardas. I teach civics and U.S. history and I'm president of the Teachers Council, our union representing E T H S's certified staff. I'm here this evening on behalf of TC, calling on the school board and school administration to increase its efforts and urgency to hire and retain black teachers and teachers of color in general. Many of my colleagues have signed letters and read them to you over the past several months. We're grateful to Scott Bramley and Angela Gardner, who have met with the Black Caucus already, to hold discussions about hiring and retaining black teachers. While we understand that the school board does not typically respond to public comments, our members are disappointed and confused about why this issue has not been directly addressed in this forum. We're eager to hear from the school board and the administration on this topic in this forum. I'm sure you all understand and agree that we need more teachers of color here at E T H S because representation matters for all of our students. Representation matters for educators too, so that we have peers.
Two.
With whom to navigate our racialized experiences here at E T H S and beyond. E T H S prides itself on being a national leader on equity in education. If we all work together, especially with the board's leadership, we can come closer to living up to our aspirations, including the racial composition of our staff. As we anticipate welcoming a new superintendent in the coming months, the school board will update its goals. Currently, E T H S does not have a goal that focuses on the hiring and retention of teachers of color. We hope that changes. The District 65 School Board has a goal that might be a model for us, and I'm quoting their goal. In order to achieve racial and educational equity in a balanced educational ecosystem for Evanston-Skokie students, District 65 is committed to requiring development of consistent hiring practices and a process to actively recruit, employ, support, and retain a highly qualified workforce that includes racial, gender, and linguistic diversity, as well as culturally competent administrative, instructional, and support personnel with an equity mindset.
One minute.
Teachers Council looks forward to working with the Board of Education and E T H S administration to create systemic change and to make progress on the hiring and retention of teachers of color. As we begin negotiating a new collective bargaining agreement, we look forward to the opportunity to share ideas we believe can help us make real, measurable progress on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening.
Oops. Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is FOIA's.
Yes, we have three FOIA's this evening, Porter, Mahalik, and Novak. And the responses are in your packet.
Thank you. All right. Item eight, board committee reports. Do we have any committee reports from the board? Now we'll go to student board reports. So Barbara, you're on.
So, can you hear me? So Student Union, as you know, like by doing the Witherspoon Forum and like some surveys, we've gathered a lot of feedback over the first half of the year from students and what they think about E T H S right now. And so we finally voted on a couple of projects we want to work on this year. These projects are about the late work policy, gender-neutral spaces, mental health slash counselor connections, and the P and wellness curriculum. We have about 25 to 30 students attend each Student Union meeting, so committees for each of these topics of about seven students have been like made to work on each of these. Right now, we're kind of in the process of like researching what we can do, what other schools have done, kind of gathering facts and statistics about each of these. And then we've also reached out to administrators, which we've had like really positive feedback and answers from, and we want to work with them. And some of them are already working on the same goals we want to achieve, so that's been really positive. So we're hoping that after spring break, we can really put each of these into action and bring something either to the board or to the administrators that are responsible for these issues. Besides that, of course, the whole student body is excited for spring break and entering our last quarter of this kind of like restarting year, I guess. So, yeah, that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Witherspoon.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Yeah, I was gonna end with spring break, but I'll begin there, Barbara, and just say, not only all the students, but I think all of the staff are equally anticipating the spring break. So I, I think, you know, it's welcome every year, but as we have made adjustments coming back from pandemic absence, but still dealing with a pandemic, I think spring break will be greatly welcomed. Some kudos, our DECA team won some awards at the state conference and we had seven first-place finishes, two second-place finishes, a fifth great, fifth plate finish, and two top 10 finishes. So as you know, our DECA program is strong and the fact that they've been able to, every year garner state-level awards is a real credit to the students and the staff that supports them. We had 12 Wildkid students who were selected to participate in the 2022 Illinois High School Art Exhibition. So, you know, imagine, one high school has 12 students chosen to, to participate in that statewide art exhibition. Kudos to our chess team, who finished third in the state tournament. We're very, very proud of them. And we, a couple of meetings ago, highlighted our national merit semifinalists. All 15 are now national merit finalists. So, yeah, this is like wow. So congratulations to all of them as well. The African-American Youth Achievement Award recipients are going to be announced on Thursday, March 17th. This is a wonderful program that's been, you know what, I'm gonna hazard a guess, I think probably at least 25 years now in the community, and it involves students in District 65 as well as 202. It's a great honor and we look forward to those announcements coming up on Thursday. Also, just remind people that it's a very busy time of the year, so keep track on the website of, of the school events and activities. There are way too many, it'd be impossible to list a week's worth of them here, but, but for everybody, there's a lot going on at E T H S. We have a career pathway fair that'll be this Wednesday for students across the school and we're really excited about that. A lot of folks have put time and effort into that. I think it's gonna be fantastic. We have our annual St. Baldur's event coming up on Thursday. You may recall that's the one where students or even staff can raise money for pediatric cancer awareness by having their head shaved. And that, I don't know where the plan for it is this year, but it's generally out here in the, in the main lobby and like during the lunch periods. And it gathers a lot of enthusiasm. Professional barbers come and actually shave the students or staff members' heads. And E T H S has raised a lot of money for that pediatric cancer awareness over the years. You heard tonight about a reminder about our Wildkid Academy, and I'll just mention that the next one is coming up shortly after spring break on Saturday, April 9th. And okay, I'll end where I started. And spring break is next week. And that concludes my report.
Don't want to forget spring break.
Right. Yeah, I thought I mentioned it.
It's worth mentioning.
So we've mentioned it, I think, three times now.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. We'll also end the meeting with happy spring break.
There you go. I love it.
So I'm gonna talk just a little bit about the, just to give an update on the search process, because I've been giving an update every month at every board meeting, so I didn't want to miss this opportunity. So I just want to say that all this information is on the website, so, so I don't really have to, to read everything here, but we just really are very grateful, very grateful to our community for participating in the comprehensive community engagement process. It was really helpful. And, and I think as a board, we've taken the information and, and applied it and we are using it. We've heard from our students, the families, teachers, staff, community members. We just heard from just such a variety of people. We had over 2,000 responses to the survey and almost 100 people participated in the focus group, so that's really good. So we're just looking forward to leveling up the educational equity and excellence work we've already started specifically. We know that our next superintendent must be strong, be a strong, clear, and transparent communicator, have the ability to lead, support, and manage staff, put the best interest of all students first in all decisions, and cultivate a culture of learning. So we, we know that E T H S has a lot of, a lot of strengths and we, in the meetings, heard many of the strengths and so many are impressed with our work. We also want to make sure that the next superintendent prioritizes ensuring a safe, there are three things here, ensuring a safe school and learning environment, supporting the mental and physical health and well-being of all students and staff, and I think we heard a lot about that tonight, and preparing students for non-college pathways. So, so, so those are just a few. There's more information on the website, including a superintendent profile, job description, and next steps. And so in terms of next steps, if, and I, I just really hope the community is, is engaged in, continues to be engaged in this process. The E T H S superintendent will have interview panel nominations and those nominations are on a Google Doc on the website. Last I checked, it's still open. I think it was supposed to still be open, so it's still open. And it, and it will, it will close tomorrow because we really do have to identify who those panels will be. And members of the panel will be hearing from the Alma Group in the next few days to get specific dates and times for their responsibilities. So once again, I just want to give a shout-out to our community because our community was extremely responsive and showed up when we needed them. So everybody, thank you. All right. So we are at action items. And the first item is the approval of Press Policy Issue 108. Board, you saw that last month and now it's in front of you for an approval.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rovitz.
Yes.
Terrach.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The next item is approval of the 2022, '23, and 2023, '24 school calendars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rovitz.
Yes.
Terrach.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Sam.
Yes. The next item is approval of textbook adoption and deletion proposals.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rovitz.
Yes.
Terrach.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Sam.
Yes. Next item is approval of Alma Advisory Group contract. Next item is approval of Alma Advisory Group Contract.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Sam.
Yes. Next item is the approval of the Holocaust Remembrance Days, and Monique is gonna read, um, the resolution.
Sure. Holocaust Remembrance Days, March 28th through April 1st, 2022. Whereas from 1933 through 1945, 6 million Jews and 5 million clerics, communists, descendants, Roma, gays, and lesbians, disabled people, Poles, Serbs, and Jehovah Witnesses were murdered in the Holocaust as part of a systemic program of genocide. Whereas the students and staff of Evanston Township High School should always remember their, I can say that for me?
Atrocities.
Atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors are never repeated. Whereas, the E T H S community should continually dedicate itself to the principles of equal justice for all people, remain eternally vigilant against tyrants and hate speech, and recognize that bigotry provides a breeding ground for tyranny to flourish. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, proclaim that in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in the hope that we will always strive to overcome prejudice and inhumanity, through vigilance, education, and resistance, proclaim that March 28th through April 1st, 2022, be hereby designated as Holocaust Remembrance Days at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you so much. Could we have?
So moved.
Motion, thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Rowland.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of approval of change order and Rutherford roofing for dance studio, tuck pony, and roof, approval of minutes from February 22nd, 2022, regular meeting, February 22nd, 2022, closed session meeting A and B, March 3rd, 2022, special meeting, March 3rd, 2022, closed session meeting, approval of bills, treasurer's report from January, personnel report, approval of resolution authorizing non-renewal of part-time, non-tenured teachers, approval of resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenured teachers other than final-year probationary teachers, and approval of rehire of second, third, and fourth-year teachers for the 2022, '23 school year.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Terrence.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Sam.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Board. Um, so, uh, anybody have any old or new business to present?
No.
If not, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move for adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we are adjourned, still before 10 o'clock.